It has been marginalized in the contemporary intellectual discourse. Certainly in the West, it would be taboo to talk about Islamization. Even some Muslim countries, that's also taboo. I don't think you want to talk about Islamization in Indonesia or Tunisia, or even Algeria, and certainly not in Turkey, maybe not even in Pakistan. I think in the Malaysian context, we need to keep on working on this narrative of Islamization, and even our own. There's no reason for non-Muslims or secularized Muslims to feel threatened by our discourse or our narrative, because certainly we do not subscribe to the extremists, right or left, ifrah or tafiret. Or what Khadawi would say, on the one hand you have the Al-Zahiroon and Jiddat, then you have on the other hand Al-Ma'atila and Jiddat. So he takes the position that we are the Al-Wasatiya, Madrasa Al-Wasatiya. IUM, alhamdulillah, our Islamization of IUM has been confined to the academic, intellectual and of course also the Islamization of the self, because Islamization in our context has always been two-fold, and the two winds of Islamization cannot be separated: Islamization of knowledge, Islamization of the self. In fact, Islamization of the self precedes Islamization of knowledge, because the Aqal of the scholar is what produces the intellectual product. If the Aqal is not purified, then the product would be, I mean, difficult to achieve the purification of the product. So the Islamic Aqal is a gift from Allah (ﷻ) with the capacity to receive knowledge, even directly from Allah (ﷻ), through Ilhaam, through Qashqah, not through Wahi, but through Ilhaam, Qashqah. Wahi is only for Nabuwa, Wusul. But for us, we can get intuition from Allah (ﷻ), guided from Allah. So the Aqal is not even an instrument for pinning about the process of Islamization. And also since we have not really dabbled into politics, politics in the country, so there's no reason why political or politicians should be concerned about or should be threatened with what we're trying to do. We understand now, with the new political climate in the country, Islamization is again a bad word. And you can see what happened recently with the idea of of the Khat being part of the Malay language curriculum, syllabus. Huge backlash from the Chinese saying this is part of Islamization. So Islamization is a bad word in the Malaysian context with the non-Muslims. But if they come to IUM, they will see that Islamization here is nothing that they should worry about, because we know how to convert people, or non-Muslims. It's actually to carry out the mission of Iqra, bismuwa, bikallam, bikhalaq. Then, no, I interpret the coming of our writer as opening up a new horizon, expanding the scope of Islamization, because he got in the issue of SDGs, Sustainable Development Goals, the 17 goals. And the more I read about SDGs, the more I analyze it. Now, this is a good opportunity for us to engage the world, because Islamization so far has been solved within its own narrow confines. So we have not really gone out of our own silos. Within our university, we talk of architecture, trying to bring in Islamic perspective. Economics has for a long time also been working on Islamic economics. Now you're coming up with your own, you know, philosophy of Islamic economics. Alhamdulillah. But it is within, you know, the confines of Muslim Islamic narrative, not really engaging the other. And I thought the SDGs would force us to engage the world, because SDG is the consensus of 196 nations, including Muslim countries: Malaysia signed it, Indonesia, and other Muslim countries, even South Indian India, UAE, Malta, Kuwait. They all subscribe to SDGs, but these are subscribed by the political leaders. And Islamic scholars somehow have not been really looking at SDGs. Right? Thinking maybe this is something secular and so on. But when you look at it closely, SDGs, what world leaders now agree, number one, so-called to save the planet, because planet Earth is under threat, and also to prevent or how to overcome future calamities and environmental calamities. But we also have economic turmoil, political turmoil. The world is in crisis. I don't have to repeat that. The Pope has said it many times. And it's interesting that the SDGs refer to the encyclical of the Pope as one of the important documents, supporting documents. How I wish that they would also use, oh, I see, let's say, Declaration as another document that would balance the Christian perspective, Catholic, and Islamic. But here, the Pope is given a very central profile. Now, one thing that I'd like to share with you, of course, this is just my Muqaddimah, and I'd like to hear from every one of you. That way I can get more information about what you're doing, especially now I'm seeing some old faces I'm seeing again, alhamdulillah, from economics, from architecture, also from political science, also from...
ICT.
ICT.
ICT, and life health sciences, and sister from...
Health Science.
Health Science.
Careline.
Careline. So these are, alhamdulillah, new faces, but you are the future. I belong to the past. So you are the future, so I am happy to see the future there. But let me just share with you on one. You see, you have the SDGs on the one hand, 17 goals, 169 targets. Then you have Maqasid al-Sharia. Because Maqasid al-Sharia has been there before, alright? And Ashati made it really into a well-established discipline, a new discipline. Ibn Ashur made it even more pertinent to the world. In fact, he added several more Maqsids. So the focus on Maqasid is very timely and very appropriate. Timely because you have, on the one hand, you have a group of Muslims who are passionate with the Sharia, and they would like the whole world to implement the Sharia. And this is creating problems in the Muslim countries as well as in the world. And therefore Sharia becomes another bad word. Sharia is a bad word in Europe, certainly in France, and of course in America. They make a big deal of the Sharia. In fact, they would like the word Sharia also to be erased, you know? In England also, although at one time the... The equivalent of the Pope in England, the head of the Anglican Church, what's his name, Archbishop of Canterbury, I think Archbishop Brown, supported the Sharia surprisingly. That was about 10 years ago. When you say, yeah, I think we should, in England, we should allow the Muslims to have the Sharia. But what he meant was that we should allow them to have their own, let's say, family courts, which have been operating in England for many years. Because you have, on the other hand, you have the Jewish courts in England. Why can't you allow the Muslims to have that? So the Archbishop was supporting that, but of course he came under fierce attack. And so what I'm saying is that Sharia has earned a bad name because of the way we, I mean by we, I mean the extremist elements in our community push for Sharia without really making people understand what it is. And for instance, why do you have to prioritize Hudud when the Muslim community is not yet praying five times a day? And the Muslim community is not Ben Zakal, as much as we expect. Otherwise Zakal would be one of the ways to alleviate poverty. But we still have, you know, high incidence of poverty. So Zakal, so in other words, the basics are not yet fulfilled, then you want to go for, you know, the implementation of the Hujud. So this to me is a question of, that's why Khadawi came up with this very important book, Fiqh al-Awwawiyyat. Understanding priorities. Fiqh al-Awwawiyyat is understanding priorities. We need to understand priorities. So priority is to explain to the people that Allah (ﷻ), whenever He prescribes a rule or an injunction, the purpose is always for the Ma'slah of the people. The common good, the welfare, the well-being of people in this world and in the after. Allah does not need for Himself. He's above Ghani, He's Ghani. But human beings need to be guided to gain this Ma'slah or Al-Falah fit Dunya wa Al-Akhira. So Sharia is to actually help His preachers to have this state of Falah in this world and in the after. So our scholars, beginning with Al-Ghazali, rahimahullah, through his Ijtihad, came to the conclusion that the purpose behind the Sharia is actually to fulfill the Ma'slah of the people and to avoid the Ma'salah, to avoid Ma'salah and to promote Ma'slah. That is very important. And this, then you have also Al-Diwaini later on also expressed the same views. And then Ashati developed it even further, strengthened it. And but it was Ibn Ashur in the 22th century who really gave it a new life. But after 9/11, then Maqasid became really very, very well presented by the scholars. Because after 9/11, people realized that you have, of course, the extremist movements in the Muslim world. Of course, some of the phenomenon of terrorism are not really the product of Muslims. It could be produced, manufactured by Western, by Western, let's say, conspiracies of the Zionist, the American CIA, and the Zionist movement have been working together also to manufacture terrorism, you know? Like I said, a timetable, where to do it, and so on. But let us not deny the fact that we do have also extremist elements in our midst. Way before 9/11, you have already, in Egypt, one of them killed. What's his name?
Saddam?
No, after Jamal.
Saddam.
Saddam. So Saddam was killed by the extremist groups. They were ex-Ikhwan, but they felt that all Ikhwan people are too slow, too soft, so they took a hard line at Tafirah. So we have At-taruf among us. At-taruf is extremism. And Khadawi, may Allah bless his soul, came up with the book, As-sahwatul Islamiya, Baina Juhud wa Ta-taruf. The Renaissance, the Islamic Renaissance between the... What, Juhud? How do you pronounce Juhud?
60 years?
But Ta-taruf is 60, and Juhud is, you know, the...
It's Chinese?
No, no, no.
Jitiatist.
That's different Juhud. This one is, this is, you know, the people who condemn Islam. So people who criticize Islam, accuse Islam. So between the accusations of the Westerners, Baina Juhud wa Ta-taruf, and your own extremist. And in that book, which he wrote, I think, '78, he said this to the young people. So you have this problem after 9/11. So Maqasid is a very, very important discipline, new discipline. And I think it's good that the Maqasid is now being revitalized, because when you apply it to Rivee knowledge, none of you are from Rivee knowledge, or Islamic Rivee knowledge, none of you, okay? That is why in Rivee knowledge, I have been urging for not Islamization, but relevantization for Rivee knowledge. Because what you have in Islamic Rivee knowledge and religious studies usually, usually, they are so textually bound, they're bound to the text so much that the text becomes sort of sacred, untouchable, you know? So you have to keep on, year by year, just mastering the text, no matter what's happening out there in society. So it's so much text-oriented, not context-oriented. So Nas-oriented, not Waqf-oriented. So because of that, the curriculum of religious studies tend to be rigid, and some of the old gods or old teachers would be very, very unhappy if you tell them to change things, because it's like challenging them, you know? Because in the religious knowledge disciplines, it's not so much the book, it's the chef that is, you know, the master. So this chef orientation also is a problem. Our orientation should be to the tooth, to knowledge, to wisdom, and not to the person. But in our tradition, knowledge, wisdom, and the person have become intertwined and cannot be separated. So if you want to learn faith, you go to Chef Soehan Soehan, Tasawuf Shiret. And then you have the well-established books, you just master them. You go to the Madrasa, you go to the Pesantren, you go to the Pondok, this is what you get. So alhamdulillah, you get the knowledge, but you cannot see the changes. And you do not respond to changes. Or the way you respond would be somehow would be out of tune with the current circumstances, because you're not following the developments in the world. And you're also not responding to that. So that's why for Rivee knowledge, in our university, I say your mission is not Islamization, because your epistemology is correct, your epistemology. I mean, in other words, you are grounded upon revelation. So revelation is the basis for Rivee knowledge. And reason has to be aligned with revelation. Reason is, reason complements revelation. Reason is not to challenge revelation. Reason is what the Makhluk is given by God. Revelation is what is Allah's knowledge. So the Makhluk must be complementing what the knowledge of Allah (ﷻ). In the beginning, there was some, you know, some people not happy with this, because they think, we also need Islamization. I said, if the issue of Islamization basically is the issue of epistemicity. The social sciences, the human sciences, the humanities, social sciences, and the natural sciences are based on, let's say, the epistemology of rationalism, or empiricism, or naturalism, or secular humanism. Whereas in Rivee knowledge, it is based on Tauhi. So you have the Tauhiic paradigm on the one hand, and then you have the empirical, secular, humanistic paradigm on the other hand. So the social sciences, the humanities, and also the natural sciences, they have to operationalize Islamization by first looking at your epistemology, right? That is, the basic philosophical assumptions of your discipline. For Rivee knowledge, the basic philosophical assumptions are, no, it's okay. But what is not okay is that they keep that knowledge confined within a certain confinement, and that is not engaging the world as the world changes. Now for, now what we have with this stress and emphasis on Maqasid, people in Rivee knowledge also will think, we will have to think about, yes, what is the, in what way is my teaching of Fiqh, or my teaching of Kalaam, or my teaching of Tasawuf in Rivee knowledge actually helping people to fulfill the Hizal Deen, okay? What about Hizal Mal, alright? What about Hizal An-Nasal? What about Hizal Aqal? But here, this is where our people can validate a lot, Hizal Aqal. So I would like to just share with you how the Maqsad, this is Maqsad number three, right? Maqsad number one is Hizal Addeen, Hizal Deen. Maqsad number two is Hizal Nafs. Maqsad number three is Hizal Aqal, okay? In what way is this Maqsad number three going to be another great opportunity for Islamization of human knowledge? Now, if you look at the Maqasid, the five Maqasid, and of course when I say five, that's not mean the Maqasid is confined to five. In fact, you can add on and see them as, what you add on as elaborations of the five. For instance, how about preservation of environment? It's not in the Maqasid, it's not stated there. But you link it as a branch of Hizal Nafs, preservation of human life. So the environment is very important so for the sustainability of human life. So if you use the word Hiz, instead of saying protection, preservation, you use it sustainability of Aqal, or sustainability of life, then in what way is your discipline promoting that? Is in what way is, let's say, Fiqh, yeah, the study of Fiqh, in what way is the study of Islamic jurisprudence helping to happen the sustainability of life? Or of lineage, that is, family, yeah? And of Mal, the economy, yeah, finance, economy, and all that. So when it comes to Hizal Aqal, literally you translate this protection, preservation of the intellect. And the way the scholars of the past explained it, they took this, or they deduced this concept of Hizal Aqal from the prohibition against Khamar in the Quran. Because if you take Khamar, or you take something that is intoxicant, this will affect your mind and that you're not able to worship Allah in the proper way. So the protection of the mind from toxic substances is the reason for the prohibition of Khamar. And so from there, they deduced the concept of preserving, protecting the Aqal, Hizal Aqal. Now, how do we see Hizal Aqal from a broader perspective? And here I'd like to mention how Sherman Jackson, Dr. Sherman Jackson, very important American scholar of Islam, Sherman Jackson. He's Afro-American, studied in Al-Azhar, mastered the Arabic language. I think he went into Fiqh, but his scholarship extends to other branches of Islamic knowledge. Young, up-and-coming scholar. So he said that this, you can understand Hizal Aqal in the context of preserving the proper function of your Aqal as Allah has intended it. In other words, the knowledge that you are producing from your Aqal has to be... has to be in line with Allah's objectives and the purpose that Allah has created human beings. In other words, you cannot just use your Aqal any way you like. Number one, it is an Amanah from Allah, you don't own your Aqal. Reason, intellect, is a gift from Allah. It is an Amanah, and therefore it has to be produced, to be used in the proper way. So to me, what you are doing, and you are the coordinators of Islamization in the Kuliyahs, what you have been doing is a way of expanding Hifzul Aqal. But what you have been doing so far, you say that this is the mission of IUM, alright? But now, the mission of IUM, of course, is grounded in Iqra, Bismillah, Bika Allah, Khalaq. But it can be better appreciated if you say that it is actually based on one of the Maqasid, Asharia. So what you are, you are in, wait, what?
Engineering.
Engineering, yeah? Okay, you are in engineering. So engineering has been concerned about ethics in engineering, not so much talking about Islamization of engineering. Okay, for good reasons, because your engineering product, not really an issue, unless, of course, you produce a technology which is really harmful for mankind, like the atomic bomb, or the hydrogen bomb, which killed thousands of people. And I think many of the scientists regretted creating that bomb. So your Kuliah has always been talking about emphasizing ethics in. So again, ethics as part of technology is another aspect of Hifzul Aqal. Right? This is preserving, not just preserving, but developing. So you have to bring in the concept of developing the mind, not just protecting, preserving, protect, preserve, but this one is letting grow. So developing the mind, developing the intellect in the proper way is Islamization of knowledge, of human knowledge. So I just would like to share with you today, for the first time I'm sharing with you, that we have now another foundation, another philosophical foundation, or another philosophical justification for Islamization of human knowledge. The old justification is based on Birqala, Bismillah, Bika Allah, Birqala, based on the fact that Western knowledge has been founded on a secular philosophical basis, whereas Islamic knowledge is grounded upon Tauhid, alright? Because Allah is the one, Al-Ali, Allah is the one, the author. And our Ilm is from Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, alright? "Walla ma adama Aslam, Allah." So you have Iqra, you have then "Alla ma adama Aslam." Allah taught, so what we know is by virtue of what Allah has given. So we have to use the Aqal in the right way. But the West, based on the secular, humanistic, philosophical foundation, releases the Aqal from any kind of transcendental control or supervision. So the Aqal became completely free. This is called, this is what Hans Kuhn, this great theologian, Hans Kuhn, called the absolutized the intellect. The intellect has been absolutized. So the intellect becomes the absolute yardstick for what is good, what is bad. You don't need anything more than the intellect. In Islam, the intellect is a means for furthering knowledge, but the intellect is grounded upon divine knowledge. And the intellect is the intellect of the At, which recognizes the knowledge, the power, the wisdom of Al-Khalik, the Creator. But in the West, there's no concept of the Creator. You are the creators of knowledge. And so for the West, knowledge is socially constructed. Knowledge is a social product, Chalas, that's it. Even religious knowledge, whatever knowledge is socially constructed. Science is also socially constructed. Now, while we agree that it's so in the case of the Western knowledge, we do not agree that the intellect is the only means of producing knowledge. The intellect, Wahyu, Wahyi, the revelation of Allah, is the larger and the most authoritative source of knowledge. And Allah has given that to human beings and not to other creatures. So brothers and sisters, in your, when you go back to the Kuliah, perhaps you may want to share with them that the reckless concern with the SDGs is a blessing in disguise. It's not, it's not really putting us, I mean, to go back, you know, or putting us backward, or sidelining Islamization, right? Or marginalizing Islamization. I say that because it does not disturb Islamization, you carry on with Islamization. But you cannot expect him to be articulating Islamization, because he never done that. In his career, as a Vice Chancellor of USM for many years, he made USM really great, making it an apex university. So his audience has always been a mixed Malaysian audience. Whereas here in IUM, our audience is an Islamic audience. With a mission, because this is an Islamic university. USM is a Malaysian national university, serving Malaysian needs, multicultural, multi-ethnic, multi-religious. So if you were to talk about Islamization in that context, he would be seen as not respecting the other non-Muslims in this university. In fact, USM also became great, because there are so many non-Muslim professionals, scholars, engineers, scientists, doctors, producing great works of research. So he's coming from that background. So if you were to talk Islamization, it might sound a little bit, you know, odd, because that has not been his concern. So he is very comfortable with sustainability, because he's been doing this in USM. And then Usim, I think when he went to Usim, I think he also brought this to Usim. So I see it as a blessing in disguise. Because if not for this, I see this as a welcoming, not to say storm, but you know, a strong wind coming, which will shake us a little bit. Otherwise, we'll still be, you know, in the silos, and then in our own comfort zone, our own comfort zone. Here comes someone from outside using a different language, but the purpose is a Maslahah of the university, Maslahah of the Umma, Maslahah. So Zul, it is Maslahah of humanity, because his target is humanity. And he has been engaging humanity. Not as much, because Zul has gone out of the Malaysian confines, Malaysian narrative. He has been Chairman of the World Association of Universities, President for several years, now he's no longer the President. So he has been catapulted into this global educational mission. So he has to speak the language of United Nations. And SDG is a language of United Nations. But it is a language that refers to a common problem in the world today, which is a world in crisis. And you have, you see the political crisis, you see the economic crisis, and we are going to see more and more environmental crisis. And now scientists are frantically searching for ways to make sure that our Earth is not going to get hotter by 2050. If we reach the 2.2% Celsius, then we will be in trouble. Not only animals will die, human beings also might not survive. And now you have another discourse coming in, this Anthropocene, Anthropocene, claiming that now we are about to enter the sixth critical period in the history of the world, the sixth. There was a time when dinosaurs were, you know, destroyed because of this cataclysmic event happening on the Earth. And we are now entering the sixth one. And let me share also with you, very interestingly, but he's serious about it, Stephen Hawking. Stephen Hawking says that this Earth cannot sustain the economic growth, because the carrying capacity of the Earth is so much. But already, we are going beyond the carrying capacity of the Earth. So it's bound to give in, in other words, the Earth will not survive. So what is he suggesting, what is Hawking suggesting? We need to survive another 1 million years, the Tamamati year, 1 million years, 1 million. But we have to look for other planets. Now, if I were to say this, people would be laughing at me, maybe throwing the shoes in my face. But coming from Stephen Hawking, they listen with respect, because here is a great scientist, theoretical, no doubt, theoretical physics, telling that the world cannot sustain, the Earth is going to blow up, and we are going to die. But before we die, at least look for some planets, nearby planets, where we can go and then develop another civilization plan. Never thinking of death, and certainly not Aakhirah also. So the worldview does not include Aakhirah, and the worldview is also thinking that. And he said so, science, I mean, philosophy is dead, dead in the West, but not dead in the East, you have Chinese philosophy, Japanese philosophy, and you have Islamic philosophy. And how is Islamic philosophy now thriving? It's the Maqasid. The Maqasid is a philosophy of Islamic law. And one of his fathers mentioned this, this Maqasid is Ayatul Al-Qariya. This is one of the signs of Al-Qariya? Al-Qariya? Genius, okay? One of the signs of, the genius of the Islamic mind. Signs of the genius of Islamic Istihat. Because this is the Istihat of Ras Ali, developed by Ashar Tibi, developed by, later on, by Bin Ashu, and then now Qaradaw, Ra'sunin, Jasser Hamda. And who else? Any others?
Bibaiah?
Bibaiah also, okay, Bibaiah. In the West, you have Tariq Ramadan. So Tariq Ramadan added another 20 or more Maqasids. Qaradaw, he also added some more. But the basic, the core Maqasid remains five, and the others are just branches of the five. So this is my message to you today. How do we make use of one Maqsad, one objective, which is Hifzul Aqal? As another philosophical, religious justification for Islamization of human knowledge. Of course, Islamization of the self, there's enough justification, right? Enough justification. Allah says, so the Nafz must be clean, the Qal must be clean. You have the Dua of Sanaa Iqrahi Ma'ali Salam, asking Allah, "Wala tughzin iyyauma yub'athoon." Oh Allah, please do not put me to shame on the day when I, when all human beings will be raised up again. "Yuma la yafa'umaal wa labanun illa man atta Allah bi qalbin Salim." On the day when, when there is no benefit, your wealth or your children, it's not giving any benefit, except those who return to Allah, bi qalbin Salim. Those who return to Allah with a sound heart. So for Islamization of the self, we need not worry about more justifications. It's just that, are we doing it? There's so much of temptation in the world. The Zinaatul Hayatul Dunya, the Mataul Ghurur, and also the Al-Hayatul Dunya itself, you know, is a problem for many Muslims. And they can be carried away by that. So that's why I'm not talking about Islamization of the self, but I'm grateful telling you, because I wanted you not to forget that these are the two wings, which must always be together, the Aslamatul Nafz and Aslamatul Aqal. Okay, so I start there. I would like to open this discussion. I would like to listen to you, and you can even disagree with me, so please don't worry. You can say, Prof Kama, what you said for the last one is licensed. No problem with me, no problem, wallah, no problem. I would like to hear the other view, and benefit from your views as well. Okay, so I'm just taking advantage of my age, that's all, not my knowledge, my age. I am at least maybe 30 years older than many of you, of some, maybe 40 years older. I'm 77, so you are?
Forty.
Forty, yeah, so you can be my son. Asher is my brother.
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one? Fifty-one, yeah. Brother, ah, fifty-one. Although if I married early, you could be my son also, but I married late. I married at the age of 30. If I married at 25, you would be my son. Your age?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four? Yours?
Forty-four.
Forty-four?
Forty-six.
Forty-six? Ah, na, you go. Ah, ni, chuchu.
Thirty-nine.
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 Thirty-nine. What a chuchu.
Thirty.
Ah, chuchu. Chuchu.
I'm, uh, now is, I'm forty-five.
Forty-five, I'm not. Ah, chuchu. What's your age?
Twenty-four.
Ah, chuchu. Chuchu, grandchild, so I have two grandchild, yeah. So I take advantage of my age, you know, to speak. But now, I really need to learn from you, wallahi, I really need to learn. Because you are the people, you are engaging the disciples, you are in the kuliah, you know the problems. I have left administration for the last two and a half years. And even when, you know, at Istag and all that, I was confined to, I did not really know what's happening on the ground, what are the challenges you're facing, and how to move forward and so on. So please, let's, let's open for discussion. We have another one hour, right? Yeah, we have another one hour, until twelve, inshallah. Okay, please feel free, yes, please. Could you also mention your name, because I think some of them may not know you?
I'm Dr. Mohammed Ayush from Kuliah Alaihis Senses, from Qanta.
Doctor Mohammed Ayush.
Yes, from Kuliah Alaihis.
By the way, he is, uh, his first degree, masters and PhD all from IIM. So this is a great product. I love that sense.
Yeah, so I was appointed as IHSK coordinator starting from this year. So, uh, which we just would like to apologize for, because the first meeting was mentioned to us in the early January, I'm mistaken, and it was mentioned to us that he was going to be a VC in Qanta, for the conference, but at that time suddenly due to some technical errors, they canceled it, and they didn't come for other meeting. And so that's why you consider this for me as, especially as the first meeting. Uh, with regards to the Islamization of knowledge in our kuliah, because we are looking at different angles. We did some survey to all of the staff, one hundred seventeen staff members. So beside the philosophical foundation that you mentioned just now, we try to make it more grounded to the staff. And because we are, there are many concerns. When we set our, our kuliah, we have to call it as the Khs members. Khs members means the staff and students as well.
How do you spell Khs?
Khs, K-H-S, Kuliah Alaihis.
Oh.
Yeah, we make it like Khs members, so usually...
I thought it is C-E-S-T-E.
So our Khs members, usually we, we comprises our staff and students. So the idea, we try to make it go back to our foundations, because I think our foundations can support, that's the idea that we try to engage for particularly these two years. So what we do, we try going back to basics, and our focus, the first focus is to have enhancement of adab. That is why we are having weekly classes of Adabul Mufrat by Ustam Ustaz, we are involving the...
Adabul Mufrat, by the way, is, Bukhari is, Bukhari is another collection of Hadith. It's called Adabul Mufrat. You know, of course, the Sahih Bukhari is, is well known, but is Adabul Mufrat is very important also.
So we, we are trying to see a different angle, first in terms of knowledge, spiritual enhancement. That was covered by classes and lectures. Another part, we are looking of Amal, Amal something like, asking and motivating the staff to do donations. In our kuliah, we have some, we call it some my, my gift, my special gift to the students. We are asking the staff, requesting them to do donations, to have the book. And inshallah, we are planning to have a collaboration with students to have a massive donation program, which means we are asking the NGOs to come, to tell their problems and difficulties they are having, and ask the staff actually to do some donations. And thirdly, we are having, we are, uh, planning for our own Kuliah Humility Day.
Humility Day.
Humility Day. Actually nowadays, we planned this, but with the new rector, they are having it already. So it's actually two in one, actually fulfilling the purposes, which means some staff are involved in doing everything for Humility Day. So there was in terms of the spiritual and other things. And as well, we are thinking about the students as well. That is why, uh, like our kuliah, IHSK, some programs, we are inviting the students as well, collaboration with students, so that, for example, we done the Iftar program last time. At least the first time, Iftar, involving more than three hundred students, we are start doing thing, we have Iftar.
Tariq Ramadan?
Yes, because this year Ramadan, the students are there. Usually students not there, they will, because it's during this, this break. So during our time, we will just get the students and ask them to come, and uh, uh, between, between departments, so that we know each other. That's the idea from the basics, from issue. But there are some issues, issues in terms, number one is that when we try to make, for example, we want to expand the knowledge in terms of philosophical, but background you mentioned just now, lectures and everything. But the participation by the kuliah members, right? For example, we invite scholars and lectures. There are many among the staff themselves, not be keen on this. They're saying this is something that philosophy, not really grounded, and we are not part of it. And when I read survey, for example, they like a basic program. For example, they want Jirazah, they want marriage course, not marriage course, parenting course, parenting courses, they want like, even to the extent of Tajudeh courses. Because they even staff, not, not economy, I mean like the technical staff, they are, they want a basic one. I'm not sure, maybe, because we didn't really go in depth of the survey, we are going to see what kind of things that they want for the betterment of the program. Sometimes when, uh, we need to gather, the problem is that to have a program that can suit the most. Sometimes we, that's why, what we, our solution is that to offer different program. For example, we can have the monthly, monthly talks, which is the academicians will come, and the lecture, etc., etc. But the technical staff may not be attending, because they say this is not for me. So when we have a lecture that cater for the technical staff, there's some academician saying, no, it's not for me, because they think this is your thing. So just the challenge, number one. Uh, second, uh, second thing is that, uh, we are targeting also for spiritual enhancement, I just forgot to mention this, that we like, we have company, we try to ask the staff to have that, the, the, to, to execute. For example, we are trying to produce a small booklet, to ask for the staff, technical staff, to make a lot of zip here to offer pure information of art. Or technical zip here morning and evening, some staff, you know, may not know what kind of authentic zip here they can do every day for production of art. Because we really believe in the hearts changes, and we believe one of the ways to go on, to make the heart changes better, to work of the Muslimah, especially in work professions, ethics, etc. We are targeting projects as well for this particular tenure of Islamization. And we have a baran camp usually, our baran camp, we try to diversify, putting some other elements involving the uh, uh, between the staff and students. But sure, budget is a question, that's why we, uh, we are asking for some donation, even on the staff. But there are the small things that I'm suggesting, especially for Qanta campus, I'm not showing Gomma as well, I think. We have a lot of visitors, the non-Muslim visitors. That can, for example, yet I'm wondering, number four of the sticker is Da'wah in the module. In the Da'wah, we have programs, we have talk Da'wah, category, talks, etc., etc. But sometimes, even we have non-Muslims.
Did you mention the module?
Yeah.
Who's providing this module?
The, what is the module is by the mosque.
Oh, the mosque?
Yes, in the website, they have the module, and a different person may use a different module. We like, I think some places, I'm using number six or five, depending on the starting point. So like last year, we did, uh, we asked certain people who are engaging Da'wah, with lectures. But usually the model is mostly on lectures, so we diversified our module. That's why my suggestion as well for Islamization of knowledge, IHSK, to diversify the, the programs, not only on talks and lectures, because not all really like talks. But my suggestion is that, for example, sentries or mosque may provide some, a small budget to provide the kit, a small kit, like a guest, so that, I mean, we have visitors, non-Muslim visitors. Usually in Qanta campus, we are many, because the suppliers, the companies are coming for workshops. So they come to Islamic University, they just know about the gasku, they enter to the university, they give workshops, they go away. Of course, we treat them, that's what the Da'wah will have. We treat them well, give them food, everything. But at least there are something that they can have a special kit, a small, uh, questions about Islam, possible issues for Islam, or even the Quran translation, a small kit, so that to give to them, so that they come up from BYU, at least they have something. But to do this, yeah.
No. No, um, this kind of brochures for non-Muslims, Perkim has a lot, Abim also has. Uh, I don't know who else will have this, so we, we do not have to, you know, just take from them?
Yes.
From Abim, uh, Perkim, maybe some of the organizations, I don't know.
So something that we can think of, something that...
Because they are in English.
Yeah.
And, and in the Miskin Nagara, and also Maljebesi, Putrajaya, they have all this, uh, different languages catering for the, for the tourists. So we have our, this is a great opportunity for Da'wah.
Some of them come to our kuliah, then maybe they come slowly once in the year, something, and maybe it's, it's, it's a bit difficult for us to explain. But they have some kit, they go back, they can reference, and they can...
Very good.
Because sometimes they come to Islam universities, and even for our lectures, they are staying in our, our universities, with a lot of problems and everything, and they don't know anything about Islam. This is our attitude, going in there further from Islam, but at least there's something that to read. Maybe because of that can change their mind. So, uh, in brief, our...
They will read Chinese?
Yeah, we have our Chinese, even they attend it, but...
The translation of the Quran in Chinese would be another good...
Yeah, and even in Kuliah of Science as well, right? That's what I can be like, maybe lectures non-Muslim lectures coming to lecture.
Just to listen to?
Just to listen because it's one of the one more, right? So just come to listen. So sometimes I see this is an opportunity for educators to engage in these things. Sometimes we are focusing a lot of foundation ideas and everything that only can be understood through lectures. Of course, that's good. There's a thing that we should go on further, make a lot of lectures, make the academician understand, correcting their ideas, giving more of this. But at the same time, more groundwork so that the staff and the people are really understand. I think one particular field that all can agree is Adeb. Aqidah may have differences. People are fighting each other issues of Aqidah. But in terms of Adeb, I think we can agree on Adeb, right? Something, the only thing is how to manage it, maybe some classes, some programs, something like that. So that is my simple association and issues. Maybe preference is to us that how actually we try to accommodate as many as possible in doing our programs. Putting aside, but I can maybe other things.
Thank you very much, Doctor, for very good, very enlightening. This is for me the first time I am hearing about the non-intellectual dimension of Islamization, which is really grounded in the social work in Dawa, Bilhara and also in Adeb. So this is a very good part of Islamization of the self. But also it's Islamization of knowledge translated into Adeb, translated into Dawa, translated into concrete action for social upliftment. I'm sure you work also with Ora Masli?
In Quanta, there are certain, there are certain flagships, they are doing some
Okay, good. So I, this is the idea of Dawa for the non-Muslims is a good idea. In fact, before the hospital came up, I was invited by our brothers in Quanta. And I urged them to make this hospital another gateway to Islam.
Yes, sure.
Through your, I get through your Adeb, how you welcome non-Muslims. How you present the cleanliness of Islam, not the cleanliness of Muslims. Muslims are not known to be very clean, but Islam is a very clean religion. And the Japanese are the best in this regard. So I, so the culture, because you have a new hospital, you can start a new culture. You do not have to continue the old culture. The old culture is a mix of Malay culture, not doing things, you know, to the best of your ability. Chukumakar, Malay culture, right? And then, you know, not really treating the non-Muslims well. And high tolerance for laxity, taking things lightly, not serious. So, and, and doctors will be under great stress. And so how can we make doctors and nurses feel this is, this is the Awa Saleh? This is the Aibahah? The more stress you get, the more Thawaa you get from Allah. So then it's no longer a source of stress, it's a source of Barakah from Allah. And it's a source of Sadaq for the doctor who doesn't have enough money. But, you know, going out to help a patient is his Sadaq. So I was talking in that line, hoping that our hospital would be, you know, a place where people come to the hospital, they live as a Muslim. They come in as a non-Muslim, but they live as a Muslim. That is very ideal. So what you're doing in the life, as I says, is really translating Islam into hospitable Islamic environment. So that's good. Okay, any other, any other comments?
Yes, please.
This introduces
My name is Mohammed Mahyudi, from the Kula of Economics. Mohammed Mahyudi, we can call you Mahyudi.
Doctor Mahyudi has been coordinator for what, 10 years?
Something like that.
Yeah, something like that. So he is a pillar. One of the pillars of the Kula of Economics.
If he says that I'm the pillar, then I must say he's a bedrock. Because basically, I've been contacting him to fill up the program. So basically, whatever pillar I am is because of the base. So I'm sorry to play the role of devil's advocate.
Okay, no problem.
With the hope that I'm, this is really not a shantani, was-wasah, in two essence, huh? One of the concerns that you raise, I want to actually connect between what he has said and also your points made earlier. One of the stigma against Islamization effort is actually the fact that it's seen as if we are trying to proselytize people. And the last point made by him about giving gifts. And you connect it with the literature or pamphlets with from Abim and from Islamic Arabism Abim, from Perkim. Somehow, I don't think it's to the favor of Islamization project. Because to me, it reinforces the stigma. But, but having said that, I think we have to use the indirect means rather than the means and the direct means. Because it's the direct means that is actually reinforcing the stigma. So why are we using the same tool when we know it comes back to the same result? So my point being, perhaps we have other means, i.e. all these controversial issues with Islam. Like Islam and the regime. That one is a subtle way of doing Dawa rather than giving Quran in translation. I mean, all that is good. I'm not saying that it's wrong, bad. It's just it's a matter of strategy and refinement of strategy.
All right.
Right? So that is something that you can do. And perhaps, well, doggies idea is very simple. You know, you give a bookmark with a simple quotation from Quran. That is practical for them to actually use it in real life as soon as they go back and want to read. And things like that is more meaningful to me because it has that practical value in whatever you give. At the same time, things are done, I mean, the Dawa is done by before, right? So these are the kind of things that I think we have. It's not as it is. We have to be more refined in our approach so that we will not be reinforcing the bull stigma.
Very good point. Another point? Do you have anything else?
Well, I have lots of questions.
Something about the, the, the state of Islamization in the, in the Kula now. Where, where are you in the Kula now? Is everybody on board? Or there's still some people still left out?
Okay, so it seems like we have surpassed the need for philosophical focus. Having said that, that is something that I don't like. I mean, I love the philosophical approach as well. In that sense, it makes the life as Islamization got into more difficult, huh? So you have your own inclination and the rest seems to have your So in that sense, that's the challenge there. So their intent is to see more things that are practical. They want to see, perhaps, that day I was with the dean and he was asking us to try and show something in terms of actual actions, you know? Things like cleanliness, things like proper Adeb. All these goes back to the fundamental issue of Adeb. So there it seems to be reinforcement. In fact, yesterday we have this Kula meeting and the dean was asking us to go back to Kitabuneh. So it is a question of trying to focus more on the foundations again. In the sense of it being different from the way we give the foundation of Islamization. So it's more of a foundation of Islam.
Why is he suggesting Kitabuneh?
So, yeah, he's trying to see it as a avenue for people to gather and try to reinforce the question of Uqwa. I think that seems to be the, as you know, the further we, or the more we have in the realized KPI, then the soul need to be put back together so that the sense of community is coming back to the picture. That is something that we felt. I mean, yes, all this KPIs and all this search for glory over publication and F R G S, and it seems to have some side effects. That side effect is the sense of togetherness.
It's missing.
It's missing. In fact, again, yesterday, this happened, everything a department took initiative to just during feast. That is my department, huh? Not my idea, somebody else's.
You do something?
Not just during Kampung lah. In the Kula level, we go during department level, we just go by
Why do something for Villa?
So, yeah, this kind of events as needed seems, more relaxed, more unofficial kind of setting. So that is something that is the feel on the ground about what is needed, what is need to be done in the Kula now. So focus on itself more than on the content of Islamization.
Because, because to me, economics is one of the pillars of sustainability. And Islamic economics is the future. Capitalism cannot survive from today. Already it is collapsing. And of course, people are talking of socialist ecosystem or socialist ecology, not socialism, but in terms of preservation of the ecology. And maybe the socialist ideas could, but here again, you're going back to the old ideological struggle between capitalism and socialism. Islam has its own approach to nature. And we don't have to go back to socialist model or the capitalist model. Because the relationship between man and nature is very unique in Islam. And that needs to be highlighted. And I see, the way I see it in the forward, 2050 and beyond, Islamic economics is the mainstream model. Now, of course, it's being tested. Some people are having, you know, testing aid in Islamic finance, right, banking and all that. But a time will come when the evil of misery, it will be accepted by everybody and the capitalist model will be rejected. And this is a time when Islamic alternative comes in. So you have the philosophical grounding now with, you know, you're working out the philosophy of Islamic economics. And then the institutions, already some institutions coming up. And later on, I'm sure Indonesia will go in the middle now. And at 2050, I think many Indonesian bank will be all Islamic. So the Islamic model is the future. And that's why I would like to know where you are now. So apparently, Alhamdulillah, you have moved up the ladder, right? So it's, then you can have the luxury of eating durian also because you have done, you know, your the basics things are okay, so you can celebrate. But I was just thinking, once those have just joined in, are they coming with still the old, the old baggage of the conventional? And so they need to be also, they need to undergo the intellectual and the spiritual Tahlil that you have been doing in the Kula. Okay, next, anybody else? Doctor Daniel? Long time since we last met?
Professor, I'm still teaching at Political Science Department.
You are?
But now I'm actually a full-time staffer at ISTEC.
Full-time now?
Yes.
Oh, what do you teach in ISTEC?
Actually, now I'm in charge of the flagship project.
Which is what flagship?
The flagship is under SDG 16, which is
16?
Peace Building and Civilizational Development. On Monday, the Home Minister was here. And he spoke about the National Action Plan in preventing and countering violent extremism. So Habibullah was a successful seminar. And what happened afterwards was that the Ministry of Youth and Sports, they contacted us. And they're looking at IUM and ISTEC to devise a program package for Malaysian youth. On VCD. So we'll start with a pilot. Hopefully, we can do it by the end of this year and then we'll try to
So, Doctor, you're now representing ISTEC, right? You're coming here representing IS, not Political Science?
No.
Okay, good, thank you.
So hopefully, we can do a nationwide program for 2020. So that's the plan. So as you may know, the team itself has expanded.
What is the team?
The team, as in the Extremism Analytical Research Unit. Ahmad and Mohammed is in the same team. We have also expanded to include Professor Pies, the current director. And also the former director of Research Program, Mohammed as well. We're looking at his research unit when it comes to target segmentation on online users. Whether they go to extremist websites and so on. So I think based on what you described just now, yes, definitely, this is an opportunity for us to, I think, expand and include Islamization. As perhaps of the module, part of the curriculum that we might want to introduce at the national level for Malaysian youth. Especially for Muslim youth.
You have to get Saad Saad first to buy in your idea.
The budget is regular.
Oh, budget?
I think the budget is about 250K for the pilot. And it's up to 1 million for the national implementation. As we're meeting with the Ministry of Youth and Sports on the 13th, after I come back from China.
Has Saad Saad come here after, after becoming minister?
No, I haven't. I'm licensing with somebody in the KSM office.
Once.
Did he come?
For debate, huh?
Of debate, of course, this is a debater.
So after this initial meeting on the 13th, I will definitely follow how we can incorporate this.
That's good, that's very good. If you meet the minister, please convey my salaam to him. Tell him stop debating, nah halal. What, because I, I feel a bit, I, I think he wanted to be politician when he said, when he's, when he came up with the idea Zakir Nai should be sent home and all that. I said, Saad, are you going to be a politician or what? Because I don't think he gave enough thought to it, but now I think it has cooled down. I think accepted the PM solution, which I think is the best. Not to send, send him home, because there's no home for him. India is with Modi there, is dead against Muslims. He is really an extremist Hindu. And they want to make Kashmir another Gaza. So it's not, not wise to send him home. But tell him to keep his mouth shut or be careful with his words. He was a bit liberal with his words. I think that's his mistake. But otherwise, we appreciate the fact that many people converted Islam through him. Although I may not agree with his methods, but as, as a guest in the country, should be very careful, especially with his words. We are a Christian doctor in Malaysia now. The racial polarization is so, 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 yes, so, so strong and very deep. And it's, I don't know when we can really bring the people back together. And so Zakir Nai's statement can ignite the racial tension and make things worse. So, but, you know, our minister is young. And so I was thinking when he said that, is he trying to, you know, trying to become popular? You know, for the non-Muslims will accept him. But he is from Bersatu, the party which is not very strong. PKR is quite strong. Then of course, the people in DAP will be very happy with him for that kind of statement. But he should not have made that statement. And I felt that when he said, you know, he should, should go home, should send him home. Anyway, sorry, please continue, Doctor Daniel, anything else?
I think this is, I think an opportunity for us to go beyond the philosophical
Right, yeah.
If we implement it and develop something.
If we can, with your, you know, there and with Saad Saad. If you can have a foothold in the ministry, then it will be beyond, you have to think beyond Saad Saad. Because as a politician, there are ups and downs. One day you are popular, the next day you'll be hated, right? And since he's young, difficult to tell what's going to happen to him. So, but if you have a grounding in the ministry, then that link can be maintained and strengthened from time to time. Thank you, okay, next, please. Sorry?
Rusliza.
Good doctor, Rusliza.
From Piau Science, Department of Chemistry.
You, you are in Quanta also?
Yes. So, Sir Esbert, you
No, do you know her? Chemistry?
Just two days.
I'm sure Doctor Norris is also has a chemistry background. So you have, you have a good chemistry. Yes, Doctor?
I was appointed after I was key coordinator for Kula early this year.
Oh, early this year?
Facing Dr. Ibrahim Shogha, because he was
Ibrahim Shogha, give my salaam to him.
Appointed as head of NGS for Quanta Campus.
Head of what?
NGS, because
Oh, you NGS prof? Doctor Ibrahim Shogha, yeah, I know him.
So the first time, it was not easy for me to accept because I don't have the Islamic background to compare with Dr. Ibrahim.
Yeah.
But then maybe I'm committed since 2011 with him. And I think that's why. Yeah, in Piau Science, we call the Islam, the I R K, we call it FORST, F O R S T. Forum of Religious and Scientific Discourse. And I think last time in Kars, we call it Asadah, right?
Okay, good.
Selfish
And I'm just a little bit like a mentor here.
How do you?
Forum of
F O R?
R S T.
F O R S?
D.
D, yeah?
Yeah.
Forum for, of?
Religious and Scientific Discourse.
This, oh, okay. How often do you have this forum?
Forum once in a year, but the talk is every month.
I see.
So the main activity is talk every month. So basically, depends and based on the Islam event, Islamic Erage and then the related together, like the Ma'idra. And then, so for event in Ma'idra, we conduct a talk from Ma'idra for Kula. So we have a talk Ma'idra for academic staff and then for labour staff. And then for talk, we have two, two times, we have a religious talk and then scientific talk. So sometimes we call the Ustad from outside UAE and sometimes we did the Quanta Campus, like Kars and Kong. And then we also conduct forum, last time safety talk with the OCB. Then we also have conducted the Arabic class once a month. The speaker is lecturer from Mathematics, Dr. Supiay, who is, I think he learned Arabic during his PhD at Japan. Bestic Arabic. And then we also, during Ramadan, we also have talk. I think for Ramadan, we have four, for diet, diet during Ramadan and then Zuhran, the two better and then more is two under scientific, that diet and what else? For the Ma'idra, the mechanism is we vote from the Amalikuya and stuff.
What about the intellectual side of it? I mean, are there people looking closely at the philosophical assumptions of contemporary science? You know, for instance, there's such a thing as a philosophy of physics, philosophy of chemistry, philosophy of biology. So the philosophical groundings of disciplines, not enough people are working on that. Because people are referred to work above the ground, not underground. Philosophy is somewhere underground. But the philosophical roots are very, very important. Because some of the problems have to do with the roots. So how can we, you know, we make sure that the secular humanistic, naturalistic philosophy of modern science could be critiqued? And then you suggest, let's say, a Taoicic science to be another alternative. Because again, as in economics, I see 2050, beyond that, Islamic economics will be mainstream. They will be the model for the world to follow. Similarly, Taoicic science, maybe it will take a longer time than 2050. But when all the technological and scientific crises come to a bedside, then maybe humanity will be looking for another alternative. So is anybody in the Kula of Science looking at this aspect, the philosophical roots of modern science?
I think we have Baturaza.
Baturaza?
Yes.
But he's not from science.
Yes.
I would like people from science themselves.
Hard to see.
Doctor?
I just wonder, why do you keep on referring to 2050? Is there any significance?
2050? Because that's the, most people, most futurists use 2050 as the limit for this. Because that would be half the century, half of the 21st century. Most people start at 2050. Even the Malaysian Academy of Science projection started 250. But I go beyond to 2077.
My, my
Why 2077? That is the beginning of the 16th century. November 17, 2077 will be Awal Muharram of November 17, 2077 will be Awal Muharram of 14, 1500. 1500. So your children will be around. My grandchildren will, Insha Allah, be around. Your grandchildren also. But what kind of world do we want them to be in, 2077? So I divide the future into three parts. 20, 20, to 2030, that's one decade. That's the first phase for Islamization. Second phase will be 2030, 2050, another two decades. That is phase number two. The third phase will be 2050, three decades, 2080. So we have to plan from today for what our grandchildren is going to see, Insha Allah, by 2077. But you look at the rest of the world, they stop at 2050. So, but to me, this 2050, you're entering the third phase of Islamization of the world. The third phase. And by that phase, we are going to be mainstream. Okay? Islamic education is going to be mainstream. Because the world, they already, they have exhausted the philosophy of education. Now it's time to go back to the Taoicic, integrated, holistic education based on the epistemology of Taoic. And not epistemology of social constructivism. So.
That explains. So basically, you're also in the psyche of understanding the end of days. Because after the rise of Islam is.
Yeah, but I don't want to go into that end of days mindset. Because we live, Allah will take care of that. But we have to plant our part. Because I go on the basis of this hadith. Even if you know the end of the world is going to come, if you have a seed in your hands, plant it. So I take this optimistic perspective. Our duty is to plant. What's going to happen to the world, Allah will take care. Allah is not going to let this world just, you know, drift the way Stephen Hawking sees it. Because for Stephen Hawking, it's just one planet among billions and billions of galaxies. So because it is so small, it's not significant. But from Islamic point of view, the Earth may be small, but it's very, very significant. This is the atom of the universe which has no bawa in it and has khilafah in it or buddhiya in it, you know. And Allah has His friend in this small atom. Al Khabeel Ibrahim is Allah's friend. And Allah has beloved in His small atom called Muhammad, Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam. So, so, small size does not necessarily mean insignificant. But the scientists are thinking in terms of size. So for them, just because we're just a small atom, we cannot be important. But there are bigger, bigger, bigger planets, even in the same galaxy. You know, we are in the Milky Way galaxy, but there are millions of galaxies. So then you must be very significant. We just have the atom called Stephen Hawking. But Stephen Hawking is thinking of how to, how to eternalize himself. So he doesn't die. Because modern science and technology can take an atom, a cell from your body, develop it, preserve it, and maybe marry you with another robot, and then you come up with another being. So you do not die. You go, you keep on transforming into new technological forms. This is, this is Stephen Hawking's imagination or, or science fiction of Stephen Hawking. But atheists are like that. But we are not atheists. So, so to me, 2050, well, I believe it's not going to be the end of the world yet. Because you have the small signs of Qiyamah, but the big signs are not there yet. The small signs are there, we agree. The alamat sa'ah are there. Barefoot, battling, competing with one another to build tall buildings. We see that in Qatar, UAE, and, you know, competing one another. And Saudi also have the tallest one now in, 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 what, in Jeddah, it's two miles up, blah, blah, blah. So anyway, so that we leave it to, what's his name, this? Imran Husein, let him do that. That part we leave it to Imran Husein. Our part, do what we can, in spite of all those things. Okay, next sister.
My name is Salwa from Kuliah Negation Management. This came from.
Doctor Salwa?
Yes.
Okay, doctor. Tell me a little bit about yourself.
Basically, I'm from Department of Tourism. But my basic background is actually I'm from Islamic education, this is my letter.
Oh, okay. Now what do you teach in the Kulia of Language?
Tourism.
Oh, tourism? Oh, there is tourism there?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Basically, I'm from Department of Tourism.
Okay.
So you travel a lot?
No.
Are you, are you thinking of Islamization of tourism?
Yeah, that, that thing I just want to add is, yeah, the thing is, most of people that, we are joining from different universities where our background is not. Islamization, except me only from, but I'm from education, not really from tourism. So in order for us to actually really implement that thing in our Kula, and in my department itself. Actually, I think it's quite difficult when most of people is not clear Islam, why Islamization mean and how is we implement. And sad to say that, just for curriculum review, we even remove one sharia complete subject from the course. Despite of the main idea is mission Islamization, but yet we even remove that thing.
Why?
Because most of the dynamic are thinking that planning is more important, recreation more important, so this. Because they're not clear, I, I feel that it's my mistake also because I didn't give a clear information about that. This subject is important.
Where is your department, here or in Pago?
Pago, Pago.
Pago. Oh, if you can invite me one day, I don't mind doing that.
Insha Allah, that's good.
Take me as a tourist. You pay for my passage as a tourist. I will go there.
Insha Allah, it's really great if you can come here, give us a clear mission so that even some of them, they want, even our head department want.
Who is your head of department?
Doctor Madde, she's definitely from Unisal before.
Oh, not our product.
Not, 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 none of them, except me only, even I'm from education.
I see, okay.
The people is not clear, they want, but in one way, they want to be in this.
But are they aware of the mission of Islamization of I R U?
Yeah, they are aware about that thing. But in order to implement, they think it's enough for one subject. I do teach one subject, Islamic perspective of tourism.
Okay.
They think that by putting one subject Islamic perspective, oh, it's enough, we already have. But yeah, I think one, and then the rest is not talking at all about Islamic.
Oh.
So I think, yeah, yeah, the thing is.
This opportunity lost.
Yeah, that, I think.
Because this is Da'wah also for Islam.
Yeah, 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 yeah. And I think, I think that what make our gradient different from other tourism is that way. But the thing, they didn't even teach that.
But in Hatt, they are having Islamic hotels.
Sharia complete hotel, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Maybe tourism and in Hatt are working on something.
Yeah, yeah, there's some people are working on that. But it seems that in Hatt, more.
Your head, we have to work on the head, the head of the department is coming from that background.
Yeah.
We understand.
She, she's trying, but the thing is, in one way, they think by putting one subject, I think it's enough. I think, because when I learn in education, I still remember, each of courses, we must have one slot, what Islamic.
Yeah.
Whatever, education, psychology, sociology. But yet here, they think it's one, one course enough to cover everything, I think. Then what make you different with that product?
Exactly, yeah, right, yeah. Why do you have? This is a decision of the authority, yeah?
Yeah, there is a, the, the H O D is someone from the R D C, she's trying, but what we, this matter.
Has Doctor Shukran gone down to Pago? Do you know who Doctor Shukran is? Is your dean?
Dean? No, he is Dr. Azro Azli.
Oh, sorry, sorry. He's not Shukran. But let them pay for it.
Yes.
We will go as tourists, as your guests.
I'm saying maybe sentries, together with Prakamal as our advisor, can go to Pago, expenses on Pago.
Yeah, yes, put me in a three-star hotel, that's good enough.
There's no first time, no problem.
Okay, good.
Even to Kulia of Science, because I also have some not much background of philosophies of science, maybe we can collaborate. Maybe we can go there as well.
Who see, okay. But because in science and Qantas, I'm not worried. Because Qantas, I'm not worried, because, you know, there are enough Islamizers there. But Pago is new.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And you are just next to Singapore. And Pago is also having problems because of political changes. And being secluded, so you need always to have this contact with the pusat, the center. The baby has to be contacted, has to be, has to be contacted by the mother. So there has to be an umbilical cord, a spiritual umbilical cord between the baby and the mother. Once you cut that cord, the baby will grow up into a Japanese tourist.
Who studies Arabic?
Who studies Arabic? Just looking for where to play golf, cheaper than in Tokyo. So, yeah, a very, a great opportunity, an amana in their hands, we cannot let it go like that. So, you're pleased, plan a day, we will go and say, don't worry, we're not going to rock the boat, but we want to understand the situation and see how we can bring in Risalah, the message of Islam, Insha Allah. Because again, the future is Islamic tourism.
Yeah, 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 yes, we do see that thing, but in order to really implement. Oh, actually, we have, we also grab like our new team, see Dr. Azro, actually.
Dr. Azro?
Azro, actually, he's good in Islamic background.
Where is he coming from? Anybody knows Dr. Azro?
Azro Azli.
He is a Ustad.
Ustad?
Yeah.
Oh, good.
Yeah, that's, he's famous with Tada Bull Center.
Oh.
He's in our T R G S team.
Oh, I see, okay, good. I think we work, we work with him. Because the dean can also impact upon the department.
He is formerly from I R K.
Really? Oh, okay. Ask him to invite me and Doctor Jent, we'll go there. And, okay, arrange for me to have also, what do you call, swimming in the sea.
Azro Azli.
Snuggling. I would, you know, honestly, I feel like Islamic is snuggling.
Yes.
What I mean by Islamic snuggling? When I go into the sea, I do dzikr in the sea. Because the fishes come around, I do dzikr with them. In the sea, with the fishy coming around, Subhanallah, this is great. And I do dzikr really under, in the sea. So then when I am in the sky, I, I do dzikr in the, with the sky. So it is an occasion for dzikr. And you see the beauty of Allah's creation, Subhanallah. Okay, so, I'm on. I will bring my, my trunk dzikr in the sea. How far away are you from the sea?
Sea?
Yeah.
We don't have sea, we have panjung.
We have to go to the sea also. Just for snuggling, where do you do snuggling in Pago?
No, there's no.
India?
Yeah.
That is a long.
It's below moi.
Might have not been a job over a long time. But anyway, if you can arrange, you know, you will do snuggling, Islamic snuggling.
Make a retreat, together with some key academics from the department or from the. Yeah, from the department, maybe together with Prakamal.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, architecture.
Okay, Smeneh Kanaheen, so Azri Laleti and Azar Karbi from the Kulia of Architecture. So basically, I'm not an Islamization coordinator, this is my last post 2011 actually. Right now, I'm already at the Kulia. But I just volunteer to come share, to, just to hear your talk actually.
Who is your Islamic?
Dr. Man.
You cannot make it today.
So first of all, thank you Prof. for your thoughts just now about Makassid and S D G. So basically, it helps confirm our discussion in your office last time, because we also did on the Makassid and S D G. So, but I, I don't think that I'm going to elaborate what's been done at Car Head at the moment because since 2011, I have shared all, I think almost all research with Prakamal really under Islamization. What research been done, what survey been done for the staff. And then we also have, but until now, I'm, I'm teaching the value ethics and build environment, okay? So basically, I'm more concerned on the teaching and learning. When talk about Islamization, it's on the teaching and learning, okay? But what I would like to share here about the state of Islamization at the Kulia, I would say that we have challenges in terms of the commitment. Commitment that I would say from the, about the leadership, the time and the interest of the staff, okay? Since 2011, I think it's not, for me, the, the progress is very moderate and to, is not to the satisfaction, I would say like that. But I also cannot blame the staff, because I think staff is.
Overburdened.
Overburdened, okay? So as a, I think Islamization coordinator, we cannot do much actually, okay? Of course, a lot of thing can be done, but for me, the priority is teaching and learning. So that's why, what I did during that, that time is we, we studied the curriculum of the courses. Okay, so for the, we have five departments, so we see the Islamic input for each program. And then in fact, for the Department of Content Surveying, we did a study on how, to what extent that their syllabus is first fulfilling the Makassid Ashariyah, the five essentials of Makassid Ashariyah. And then now the papers and the publication is actually being published as a book chapter, as a journal paper, is Alhamdulillah actually. Okay, but that what we can share with you, okay? But in terms of commitment, in terms of the leadership, that, that one is on time, the constraint from the staff. But in terms of the leadership, I strongly believe that they must have a strong commitment from the leader in order for the thing to move on.
You mean the dean or the head of department?
I think the dean.
Dean.
The dean.
Who is the dean now?
I have professor, we have Professor Razak.
Razak.
Razak Sapian. Okay, I would, I would say that he's also interested, because each time and then he will try to get information and try to execute Islamization. But I think he is also overburdened with other things. That's why I would say in terms of interest and priority just now. But until, what I can say is that almost just 30% of Islamization is happening at the Kulia, I would say.
The rest is for Jaleel?
Business as usual. Teaching, learning, research, giving application, that kind of thing.
Oh, business as usual.
Business as usual.
With S D G, there's no business as usual anymore. Really, there's no business. Because, you know, because the urgent problems of the environment, the crisis in the world, it cannot be business as usual. So even for build environment, so the challenges are there. And we want to bring in this, the sense of urgency. And we want to bring in this sense of urgency that United Nations, Israel, UNESCO, U N D P, UNDO, all that. They really feel really a pressure and time is running out. And many environmentalists believe that we don't have the time. So there should be that sense of, so then the Kuliya should be feeling, we need to provide the alternative to prepare for not just business as usual, so a sense of urgency.
Yeah, I agree with you, Prof. So that's why in teaching the value ethics and bit environment, so basically about the sustainability from the Makasid perspective, Ashari'ah perspective, that has been taught to the student. And then we hope that our students can be the ambassador. Okay, that's the most part that we can do at the moment, okay, through our students. Okay, I really emphasize on that topic, actually. So maybe one last point from me, Prof, is that, so after twenty-two years been with Kaed, with my background of Ashari'ah law. So I devise a module, a training module for the Islamization. So in which I think we should give more emphasis on the way of decision-making be made through the Usura faith. Because we can't be, we cannot be focusing on certain, on the certain segment only. But we have to teach them how to make a decision through a Usura faith, that will help them to branch out into their area, okay? Be it there from your bone training, architecture, Q S or whatsoever, but they have a basis how to make a decision. And then that will guide them is through Usura faith.
By Usura faith, you're referring to the Qawain Fiqiyah?
Qawain Fiqiyah is the, okay, yeah. Maybe at the conventional Kuliya at Kaed, for example, Qawain Fiqiyah is the most suitable, I would say. Because they cannot go into the depth of the Usura faith.
Of course.
Yes, yes. So that's what we, okay, I tried to devise that module in which I will take this opportunity to make appointment with you next Friday. To discuss the module, actually, I have the draft.
Next Friday.
If you have time, I'll just see. Or maybe I can wait.
When I come for the class, then you can come after twelve, before the Jumat.
Okay.
We have sixth class on the sixth.
On the sixth.
Oh, every Friday, Prof?
Every Friday, you know, certain Fridays, but incidentally, the sixth of September, he has a class.
Okay, okay. Because I used to meet Prof at his office, I think, just once, to discuss about. And then the last point is that also I'm thinking of organizing a M O U with the Fatwa Division of the Riyadh Ba'umut, Islamu and Melaya. At the moment, under our T R G S, that is what I did, actually. Because we are studying on the, we are studying on the how to provide housing on Wakaf land. And then we will also be the Zakkat Division. So there are so, there are quite Ashari'ah matters to be resolved. So we work with the Mufti Department through their Fatwa Division. So I think from this experience, I will, I already proposed to the Kuliya that for the Kuliya to have a M O U with the Mufti Department. Whenever issues on environment, bit environment, then that will be channel into it. Because I don't think that we are able to resolve to that extent. Because even me be there, I'm not able to tackle all the things. And then I'm not capable also, okay? So that's the two thing, that's about the module and then the M O U with the Fatwa Division and the Mufti Departments, Lathmu and Melaya. That is, I would regard as Islamization movement at the Kuliya, I try.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Prof.
Thank you very much, Dr. Azila. I thought you are the coordinator. Anyway, good, you're still there. I thought you were planning to do Hikyar. Not success. Okay, good, good for us. Okay, engineering? Sorry. Okay, we have another ten to fifteen minutes, because we have two more. Oh, yeah, three, okay, five minutes each.
Great.
Okay, please, doctor? Doctor Sayed?
I'm Sayed, no.
Sayed, no. You're from Pahdaraman?
My grandfather from Pahdaraman. From Kuliya Engineering, Department of Mechanical. I think many of the issues is basically similar in the engineering, but I think because of the time constraints, just highlight different things that we try to do in the Kuliya. In the early of the year, the dean called for the meeting for the strategic planning. So he come up with this, one leader, he called it, he used a term said not either Arabic, but not also English. He called it a morobbiatic environment. So it's like hybrid.
This is Dr. Faris?
Properly.
Dr. Faris? Oh, Mashallah. Good, good. He's following my example.
So basically, we try to promote the idea of every single person in the Kuliya. Supposed to be a morobbi. It's not only the staff, the academician, of course, in the class, they're supposed to be like a morobbi. But also the non-academic, the technical staff, when they go to the labs, they have this, all the ethics and they need to give examples or to teach the students. Also, we try to promote this, not only the staff, but also the students, the seniors to the juniors. The associations, leaderships, also supposed to be a morobbi. So that is among the initiative that we thank you. I think that's to be a...
So, Morad, I work in Co Ed, Kuliya of Education. I don't have many things to say, but probably you know that education is very sensitive in the sense that it works with the demands, like any other Kuliya. But in our Kuliya in particular, we have Department of Islamic Education. And the rest, we have three other departments.
What are they?
Curriculum and Instruction.
Curriculum and Instruction.
And we have also Counseling and Educational Psychology. We have Languages.
Department of Learning.
Yeah. And we have Social Foundation and Administration.
Also another department?
Yes, yeah.
Department of Social.
So Islamic Education is under the Curriculum and Instruction. Talking about Islamization, I don't know, there is a sense of saturation and people are exhausted of theory, yeah? So when I took over from my colleague brother's life, Aziz, I found that he had already some programs like the Mangri Teskira for the Mean Staff. We have, of course, the Levita Camp, which is now directly under the Islamization Coordinator.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
You are another coordinator?
Yeah.
For the Kuliya? Okay, good.
So also, there was a quick succession of deans. We had three deans in two years.
Oh?
Yeah.
It's like Japanese prime ministers. Resigning after he...
So, you know, when the dean comes, of course, he has his own vision and so on, so you need to adopt them, change certain things. But I can say that there is also a sense of strength among the staff. We have Profesnani, for example.
She's still there?
She just left. Oh, yeah, this semester, she retired, yeah. But probably she will be on part-time basis, she will teach certain subjects, yeah.
Where is she going?
I think she retired.
Just like that?
I don't think that she has any new...
Taking care of her mother.
Yeah, this is what she says.
Yeah.
She's taking care of her mother. Yeah, but it is a big loss for me.
Indeed, yeah, it's a big loss for the university.
For the university. And we thought that she will, she will stay longer.
Yeah.
And probably she will be given something else, but, yeah. So the presence of Profesnani and other senior staff, Profesnani and others gave that sense of strength to the Kuliya. And most of the staff there have been there for a long time.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the concepts of Islamization are already digested.
Prof, Baba is still there?
He's still there, yeah, still there. But not in good... Yeah. So we are continuing what others have started already. As I said, we have Mangri Teskira for the Mean Staff, we have Levita Camp. We used also the grant funded by the Triple I T to engage in several research books. For instance, Profesnani herself, Prof Hayr, Dean, Dr. Azem, Dr. Lexu Yemi, all completed their books, yeah. They are books for the Kuliya exam. So... Yeah, I have a Islamization application, which is, of course, has complete your...
Well, other new books on Islamization, I believe.
These were just recent, the one that I was thinking about for the moon, is there any other books, you know? Are you, are you, the Shalat benefit also from the ideas given by our brothers here? Somewhere like this, my special gift to the two students, I R K, yeah? Iftar Day, which include all the students. We have Iftar Day also, but for the staff. So probably now we will expand to the students as well, yeah.
This idea of being a morobbi, is it now widely shared by people in the Kuliya?
Officially, no, Prof, but as I said, because the staff were there for a long time. So they benefited from the EU, what is going on in the university in Jamakou. So there is awareness, I didn't feel for that, there is a need for some staff. We have one or two new staff, but they are the product of the university in Jamakou. So, but if you advise us to engage in any other form of new initiative under this morobbi concept, you know? Just as a reminder.
Yeah, but maybe also this Hezal Aqal could also be developed in the department. That's another platform for intellectual construction or knowledge construction.
Yeah, in fact, Prof, when you mentioned about the Pope's psychological approach on S D G. And you mentioned that Islamic, the Islamic discourse is absent. I actually put a note that it could be a good research, research paper to present the Islamic approach from there towards S D G.
Yeah, right, right. Okay, fine, thank you. Last but not least.
My name is Azna, Azna from Kuliya of I C T. Maybe this is true for myself, I'm actually a graduate of I U M. And my first degree is Shaniya Revivalition.
Oh, for this?
In fact, in Kuliya I C T, we have three graduates from Shaniya Revivalition.
What department?
I'm from Feksofi.
Feksofi, oh, okay, good.
And we have another brother also from Feksofi, and that one is from Rasunah.
And your M B A is from where?
My master's at U I T, in Information Management.
And B H D?
A B H D at University of Melaya, at the Department of Science and Technology Studies.
Oh, I see, okay, good.
So maybe just to share a bit about Kuliya I C T, so Alhamdulillah, Kuliya I C T is, you can say, the one of the later generations Kuliya that was established. So it was formed from the two departments that was already existing from the university, in terms of economics and also laboratory science from I R K. So we have the advantage whereby the founding members of the Kuliya are already existing staff. So in terms of the leadership and in terms of building the culture, that was already there from the very beginning. So, and in fact, even for the later generation, veterans, they were also students of this first generation founders of the Kuliya. So basically, the mindset and the culture is a handla very well established in the Kuliya of I C T. And for those who are coming from other universities, we try to bring them in as most as possible. So all our teams begin from Professor Adam, Dr. Basli, we have also Prof, uh, Kuma Rasambu. And then Prof Ha, I mean, even the Prova is originally from Singapore, from the industry, from Nanyang Tech.
But has been Islamized?
Yes, yes, he's very much an active, and he's really into it. So Alhamdulillah on that part. We see that through, maybe just a bit on this.
For your information, they have, they have Usra every Friday? Now it's two hundred and what? What is the number of Usra?
Uh, I think it's already two hundred something.
Yeah, two hundred something.
Yeah.
Very regular Usra Friday.
Almost every Friday, Usra Tafsir Alazhar by Dr. Ibrahim Sa from Department of Rasunah.
Okay, good.
And apart from that, we also have occasional taskera. And also during Kuliya meetings and department meetings also, we will appoint one to give taskera to the meetings.
Because, again, I C T is at the forefront, you are at the cutting edge of technology. And now we've been cut up by technology also. So I C T from the Islamic perspective would be the alternative.
Yes, yes. And Alhamdulillah, all of the members, I mean, having the idea.
Good.
So we see that through, on the academic side, teaching learning. So we have one compulsory course called A D and Islam, which is taken by all the students, all undergraduate students.
Oh, I see.
And also for postgraduate, we have also another compulsory subject, Islamic Worldview, I D and Society. So even for the B H student, they have to audit that course before they start their research.
That's good, this is the kind of thing that should other Kuliyas can also take advantage.
And Alhamdulillah, we have also managed to come up with a few books on Islamization. And also, others are also coming, Inshallah, even one colleague from who's teaching of programming. She came to approach me and saying that she wanted to come up with a book on Islamization, a textbook, yeah.
Oh, good.
And we are working closely with Triple I T on this. Because they are, the office is now in our building. Triple I T.
The office is in your building?
Yeah, yeah, the office is now back on, in I E M, like previously.
So Dr. Jamil's office is there?
Yeah. And he's a branch, the office is now in our building.
Okay, good, good. Don't let Triple I T take over your building.
They're paying rent, Bro.
They're paying rent, yeah, yeah, yeah. But the history of Triple I T started in P J with an office there. It was controversial in the beginning. We decided to bring Triple I T there, you know, so people, what's happening? And they were afraid that Triple I T will take over.
I still remember the P J campus.
You still remember?
Yeah, I graduated from P J campus.
Oh, really?
I'm actually same batch as Hamis.
Oh, Mashallah, okay, good, good, Alhamdulillah. So your children are actually going to be the leaders in two zero seven seven. With, because you cannot predict the future of technology, right? It's just beyond prediction. And we just hope that things will not be for the worse.
Yes.
But because, you know, the possibilities are mind-boggling. You could just install, you know, computer in your body and that can detect everything, blah, blah, blah. Can receive all kinds of things, you know? Imagine that's going to happen to zero five zero, a child will have all that inside. Imagine that's going to happen to zero five zero, a child will have all that inside. Who is going to do the sifting of all this information, the good and the bad, you know? So it's really mind-boggling. But we hope your Kulia will make sure that we are not going to be carried away or put into the black hole of ICT.
Sure, we, I mean, we are looking to how we want to see the, the technology can be directed or developed in a way that not only benefit the Muslims, but also...
But you have to think of how, where, when can we be the producers and not the consumers?
Yes, yes, yeah. So I mean, leading to that, even for research projects, busy research by our masters and PhDs and also by the staff also. So quite a number of them also relate to looking to Islamic aspects as well. And also our, for our undergraduate students, the society, they, I notice they have one Islamization bureau. So they do conduct programs like Itar, like talk, so the...
You have non-Muslims?
At the moment, no.
No. Okay, good, Alhamdulillah. We, we are being enlightened by many good developments in the university. Please keep it up because this is our mission and mission of the university. With or without the rector, we have to continue this Islamization. It's a mandate from heaven, not from rector, it's a mandate from heaven. We are the Khulafa, we carry the Amana, and we have to do whatever we can. So we see some problems in the Department of Tourism, but Insha Allah, this can be overcome, Insha Allah. So I wish to thank you all for, for coming. And Dr Nor told me that there's lunch also. So just take the food and bring it over. Okay. So well, that is end with the speaker Farah and Soadah.